Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. Our meeting is open to the public and there are no items that contain exempt information. Our meeting is going to be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to look at later on the council's website. We've received three petitions and one remit question. We've got no agenda-related questions and no statements from members of the public for today's meeting. As we always do in all of our meetings, please can I request that mobile phones and other such devices are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? And there's no fire alarm that's planned for today, but if there is, of course, for an emergency evacuation, then please do take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is Tudor Square just outside the Crucible Theatre. Please, can I ask each committee member in turn to introduce themselves? And I will start with councillor Campbell-Pew, who is at my left. Councillor Campbell-Pew.
Hello, you've just given it a bit of a spoiler really. My name's Craig Campbell-Pew. I'm a councillor for East Ecclesford Ward. Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Wright, I'm councillor for Walkley Ward.
Hello, I'm Janet Riddler, councillor for Stockbridge and Upadon.
Hello, I'm councillor Alexi Diamond, councillor for Gleedless Valley Ward and deputy chair of this committee.
Hello, I'm Ruth Mercero, councillor for City Ward.
Hello, I'm Tim Huggan, I'm councillor for Crooks and Crosspool Ward.
Councillor Ian Horner, councillor for Beaton Ward. I'm group spokesman, T S A.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Beecham and Greenhill Ward.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. And of course, today during the course of our meetings, we'll hear from lots of council officers who will introduce themselves when they are introducing specific items. But I'll just invite council officer colleagues who are sat at this table here just to introduce themselves, starting with Sean.
Thanks, Chair, I'm Sean McLean, director of regeneration and development.
Good morning, I'm Robert Parkin, assistant director for legal services.
Afternoon, Amanda Clayton from Democratic Services.
Thank you very much, Amanda. That then takes us to the items for decision today. So item number one of our meeting is an opportunity to receive any apologies for absence. Amanda, have we received any apologies for absence? I think we're fully staffed in terms of the complement of colleagues today, so thank you very much. Item two is an opportunity for us to consider whether there's a need to exclude the public or the press. And the meeting today is open to the public and there are no items on the agenda that contain exempt information. Item three is an opportunity for council colleagues to ask whether they would like to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda. And of course, if you do, then please do refer to the item of business and state whether it's a pecuniary or a personal interest. And I'm sure also you'd outline the reason for that declaration. Do I see any colleagues who wish to make a declaration of interest? I don't, therefore we go to item four, which is an opportunity for us to consider the minutes of our previous meeting. That was a meeting that was held on the 17th of September of this year and is in your agenda pack. Colleagues, can I ask whether you are content with approving that those minutes as a true and accurate record of our last meeting? Seeing nodding from colleagues and no dissent, so therefore colleagues will approve those minutes. Thank you very much. Item five is an opportunity for public questions and petition. Now, there's a maximum of 30 minutes for this agenda item of business. And we have received two petitions that have been received, but I'll also talk about the third one that we have received that we did cover in our last meeting, but it's important to know in a short while. So firstly, we've received a petition from Mr Lee Brown with regards to double yellow lines on Hutchinson Road. And we've also, oh sorry, from Miss Lee Brown, apologies, that's my mistake, and from Mr Craig Milner about First Street Planters. And I think we'll ask Lee, if you're happy to come up to the microphone just there next
Thank you. Just before I start, I have provided some copies of maps and diagrams that I'd like distributed after the statement, if that's okay? So I understand I've got three minutes, is that right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, I'm ready to start. So on July the 7th this year, extensive double yellow lines were added to Hutchinson Road, creating congestion chaos. The council stated that this was to improve access for deliveries to Hutchinson Road, supporting the Millhouses pub, which corners both Hutchinson and Abidale Road. Rewind to 2015, the pub was granted planning permission to erect canopies for an outdoor drinking area, which would result in the closure of one of its car park entrances on Abidale Road. The report confirmed delivery vehicles do not currently enter the site, but pull up along the frontage of the premises. And a continuation of this arrangement was acceptable from a highways perspective and not considered to lead to excessive traffic levels. Despite the canopies never being installed, the Abidale Road car park entrance was closed and the seating area developed. However, since 2021, the pub has routinely used the Hutchinson Road car park entrance for its deliveries. On the 15th of August last year, the council wrote to affected residents about the proposed restrictions, however, this did not include a map. The Connecting Sheffield website clearly displayed a map of double yellow lines that only featured at the junction of Hutchinson Road, which residents supported and no objections were made. The council stated that all statutory procedures had been followed, but later confirmed that no formal process was undertaken to actually verify whether deliveries were designated via Hutchinson Road. The council's planning officer, who wrote the 2015 report, confirmed that frontage meant only Abidale Road and that if Hutchinson Road servicing had been proposed initially, further consideration would have been required. In 2018, Mercia School opened a half a mile away. Having now reached its full capacity of over 1,000 pupils, students routinely take a shortcut crossing Abidale Road by the pub in order to reach Marriott Lane via Hutchinson Road. Residents and parents feel the current restrictions undermine the reported objectives of ensuring reliable journey times and promoting free and safe flow of traffic. L lorries serving Hutchinson Road will inevitably stop or slow traffic on Abidale Road, affecting buses in both directions, thus impacting journey times. And the size and turning circle of delivery lorries on Hutchinson Road create a serious safety hazard near the busy bus stop, which serves two heavily used school routes and for the pupils crossing nearby. This is a ticking time bomb. Given that, the 87 petitioners were unaware of the current restrictions, so missed the opportunity to object. We ask that this matter be urgently reviewed by the council. Thank you. Could I ask that the papers are distributed, please? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this issue to the committee today. And I can see that those papers that you've supplied very kindly to us have been distributed across our colleagues. And no doubt they'll be able to each look at that. I'm looking at one at the moment that you've taken a lot of time to prepare, including lots of pictures about the impact of deliveries on the streets. So thank you very much for doing that. Quite clearly, a lot of what you've brought today is quite technical in nature, and therefore it's only right that we ask our council officers for that technical advice as a committee on this, and that's what we are going to do. But I do want to thank you for making the committee aware of this today. I think it's probably also important to make you aware of the wider scheme and why it was important for us to put a traffic regulation order into this area, notwithstanding the fact that we will take this away and look at it and get back to it in much more detail. But those reasons for us doing this and putting in a traffic regulation order were to facilitate the free and safe flow of traffic. And I think we should also note some of the concerns that you've got with regards to that. There were also for improving the amenities of the area through which the road runs. And I know that you quite clearly love the area and that's why you're here today, because you want to see it improved and to be a great place for everyone to live and experience. Now, our Connecting Sheffield scheme, of which this is part, is designed to help transform travel around Sheffield and to make the city a much more attractive place to live, work and spend time. And this part of the project aims to improve access to employment, to retail and leisure opportunities, both into and around the city centre, but also where you live as well, by providing more consistent public transport journeys from the southwestern areas of Sheffield for people who use the bus to get to work. All of that is really, really important as we move towards bus franchising, which will hopefully be a real transformation of bus journeys in our city, which starts from 2027. It'll also make public transport a more attractive option overall by giving buses much more priority. And as a committee, this is something that we've really prioritised as part of our transport vision for the city, which was approved in March of last year. However, I've asked officers on behalf of members here in our committee today to look at these matters and prepare you with a much fuller response with recommendations for additional action, if any is required. Now, we expect that this review to be completed by December, which is when our next committee meeting is, and we'll ensure that the council writes back to you about this particular matter. And I do want to thank you for bringing this petition to us today. As you were coming up the staircase, I did reiterate to you just how important it is, this item in our agenda. It's about citizens of our city being able to get their voice heard. As a council, we don't always get it right, but we do want to hear, to listen and to adapt as much as possible. So thank you so much for bringing this item and we'll certainly get back to you as soon as we can and certainly by December.
Thank you. Could you confirm the date in December, please?
I'm afraid I don't have the specific date of our next committee meeting, but it is in December, but we'll make...
17th, if I've just been...
It's on the 17th, okay.
Thank you very much and thanks for listening.
Superb, thank you so much for coming today, we really appreciate it. Our next petition is from Craig Milner and it's about the First Street Planters. And as I understand it, I think that's in Walkley Ward, but I think it's also on the border of kind of Crooks Ward as well. Craig, if you're happy to, then please do come over to the desk down there. And when you're ready, if you just press the button and that will activate the microphone so that we can all hear you.
Right, my name's Craig Milner. Thank you for listening to me today. I started a petition to remove planters from top of First Street, as I can't see them as serving any purpose whatsoever. It's just disrupted all our local lives. I grew up in Crooks, most of my friends and family are in Crooks. And from me getting back from Crooks to my house now, it's nearly a mile every journey extra, because we have to go down to Enders South Road to traffic lights or down to Commonside to get back to my house. It's frustrating when you drive past top of my house and I can see my house and then I have to drive round and come back. And it's same for all residents I've talked to on First Street and Bank House Road. Now, last year, we had an old lady across the road, she set a chimney stack on fire. Now, four fire engines turned up and from the point of her house for the next five hours, everybody above that house, we couldn't leave the road, we couldn't leave anywhere. So we were trapped till the fire engines moved. Now, if there's no planters at top, it's a safe way for people to get out if the road's ever blocked. We've had numerous water leaks over the last year and a half. And when they've been doing roadworks, it's impassable until they make it passable. Same with deliveries with large lorries. So I'm here representing friends, family and residents of Bank House Road and First Street. Also, when it snows, because my road is at a really steep angle, sometimes only way out for people on Bank House Road is to grip and get out of the top, because they're not prepared to take the cars down that steep road. So, yeah, it's just about impacting what it's done to us. It's a quiet road anyway, really quiet, because it's really thin and not a lot of people use it. The angle at top of First Street, so coming off Crooks is like 180 degrees, nobody does that, nobody does that, they drive straight past. It's same with Evergate Road, but it's put so much more traffic for me and residents onto Enders South Road, bottom of Crooks and also Commonside and Evergate Road. So I think that's about it, really. It's my first time doing this, so...
Craig, thank you so much for bringing the petition today and also for the kind words that I know that you had in the anti-chamber as you were coming into this room about our late colleague and Lord Mayor Anne Murphy, who I knew that you grew up with as a child on Western Road. And I think, you know, it's really important to reiterate what we said before, that actually petitions are really important of our, part of our democratic life in this city. So thank you very much for bringing it today on behalf of the committee. Now, the introduction of filters and crossings into Crooks and Walkley was subject to an experimental traffic regulation order process, which at the time involved a six-month consultation period, wherein residents, businesses and visitors in the area could feedback either directly to the council's Connecting Sheffield team or via the Connecting Sheffield website. Now, during that initial implementation of the scheme, the council undertook face-to-face surveys and we consulted a cross-section of residents living in the area, with a majority demonstrating support for the scheme. Now, driven by the work of local councillors, at the end of the first year of the scheme's operation, the council undertook a really targeted engagement with the community to obtain a cross-section of views and to set up a survey for anyone to provide further feedback. Now, we wanted to hear what the community felt on these changes. All of the views expressed were taken into consideration and this committee, at the time the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, took the decision on an entirely cross-party basis to pursue some elements of the original scheme and remove some others. We very much took a pragmatic approach, listening to residents and taking the relevant action. At the time of devising this scheme, based on experience gained elsewhere, our technical experts believed that if First Street was not included and did not receive a traffic filter, a significant amount of traffic would use the road to avoid the signals at South Road. Given this and the general support through the consultation and the post-scheme monitoring, we're now making progress with turning the current temporary arrangement into a more permanent affair to improve the luck for residents in the area. And whilst I appreciate that this answer perhaps isn't necessarily what you would want, I think it's important to thank you on behalf of the committee and to thank residents for bringing the petition today.
Do you have a consultant? We never received anything from her. Nobody's asked on my law or my local table, so you've all expressed that. Do you have a consultant?
Okay, I'm sorry to hear that. From talking to colleagues and talking to our council officers, we embarked on quite an extensive consultation process throughout the process and took on board community views in order to be able to design this scheme. Now, quite clearly, as a council, we don't always get things right. We're happy to adjust and amend what we're doing, and I think that's what we did throughout the course of this scheme. And before approving it, because it was originally an experimental traffic regulation order where we were learning things, we adapted and we responded to community concerns. I appreciate that that might not satisfy you and some residents, but in line with our consultation and our decision, that was a decision that we made. Well, thank you very much, Craig, for bringing your petition today. I appreciate the constraints of bringing petitions mean that you get an opportunity to present the petition and then you get a response from the council. And unfortunately, sometimes that can be unsatisfactory for people, because it doesn't allow that kind of back and forth, which it looks like you were hoping for. More than happy to have a phone call with you in the future, to meet with you in the future and to talk with you. And I know that your local councillors will be as well. Craig, we'll look forward to speaking to you. Unfortunately, due to the confines of these meetings, it does mean that we can't necessarily have a back and forth. I wish we could, but there'll be other opportunities for us to do that. Thank you very much. Our next petition is from Christina Reese and it's about a pedestrian crossing at Abidale Road and Bannerdale Road. Now, committee members will be aware that Christina, on behalf of residents and people who use those streets in that particular area, came to our last meeting and did present many of the aspects of her petition. She wanted to present the full petition to us today, and that's available on the council's website. And I think it's only right that we do note that petition, but we did give her a response at our last committee meeting, but it was important that we did note it. So we do have a third petition that's coming to us today. Christina isn't here, we did give a response at our last meeting and will continue in dialogue with her and other campaigners about that particular issue at Abidale Road and Bannerdale Road as well. So colleagues, that then takes us to the end of public questions and petitions. We did receive one remit question, which was received, the petitioner, sorry, the questioner received a written response, which has been circulated to members and published on the council's website. They didn't submit a supplementary question and I'm not here today, so therefore we won't be giving any further responses. Colleagues, that then moves us on to the next item of our agenda, which is an opportunity for members' questions as item six. Now, no questions have been received today from members, so therefore we'll move on to item seven, which is the work programme. And that's on page 21 of the agenda pack. And Amanda, I think you are going to run us through that.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to note that there are quite few amendments and new items following the workshop that was held to, you know, add some dates and plot out the work programme for the next year. So hopefully it's looking like a much more settled work programme now. And then on page 23, just to draw your attention to the referral from council on the 1st of October with regards to holding Yorkshire Water to account. And I believe we have a proposed action or response.
Absolutely, Amanda, and I'm happy to make colleagues aware of that. Now, colleagues will remember that our last full council meeting, we discussed this particular issue about lane rental. We passed a motion to introduce lane rental in Sheffield. Now, it's a really important step to help us tackle congestion and to encourage utility companies to complete roadworks more quickly, and that was approved on a cross-party basis. Now, since then, I've had an update from Rob Clayton, who is sat in the chamber today. He's our excellent service manager for network management based in the town hall and his team helped keep Sheffield moving. Now, he's asked me to let the committee know that his team is now actively working on this on our behalf after that referral from full council, and they'll be providing updates as things progress. Now, before we can apply to the Department for Transport for the powers to run lane rental scheme, there are two steps that we need to complete. Now, the first, we need to review and consult on which streets are classed as traffic sensitive. Now, that matters because lane rental can only apply to those streets and we expect that'll be around 10% of the whole network. We're working with a company called GeoPlace, who are currently analysing our traffic data. Now, once Rob and his team get their recommendations, we'll need to check for any gaps or anomalies before finalising that list. And the second thing that we have to do is we have to carry out a full review of our current permit scheme, and that's to demonstrate to the Department of Transport that we're already using all the powers available to us to manage roadworks. And I know that we are, but it's a process that we have to go through. It's a three-year review and again, we'll work with GeoPlace, that company that we've mentioned, and other advisers to get that done. So in summary, we're absolutely committed to delivering a lane rental scheme for Sheffield. That work started, but realistically, Rob's team tell me they're working really hard on it, but we're looking at late 2026, probably more likely April 2027 for its implementation, assuming that we get agreement from all necessary consultees and of course, subject to this policy committee's final approval as well. I want to thank, of course, Rob's team for their work that they're doing on behalf of the committee on this really important matter as well. So colleagues, I thought it was important that we did bring that update so that you could see that we passed something in full council and we, as a committee, then are responsible for working with our officers in order to be able to deliver on it. So colleagues, I'll just go back to Amanda. Are there any other outstanding items about the work programme? I don't think so. Colleagues, any comments or questions or clarifications about the work programme? I don't see that anyone indicating. So colleagues, are you happy to therefore approve the work programme as it is? Obviously noting the fact that the work programme does get updated quite regularly and is subject to lots of discussions outside this place as well. Colleagues, if you're happy to approve it, can I see some nods? So therefore, that has been approved and I can see no dissent from colleagues, so we will approve the work programme, which is on page 21 of the agenda pack. And also, Rob, thank you so much for your work on lane rental in our city, really appreciate it. Thank you. That therefore moves us on to our formal business today. And we start out with item eight, which is the Bradway and Ilmarshel 20 mile an hour scheme. That's on page 35 of the agenda pack and the presenting officer is Lisa. And Lisa, thank you so much for coming back to our committee today. Every few meetings, you bring another one of these fabulous schemes, so we really appreciate it. And you're supported today and joined by John Shortland, who is our interim assistant director of City Transport as well. Lisa and John.
Thank you then. So the report is the consultation of the Bradway and Ilmarshel 20 mile an hour scheme as you've just introduced then. I do want to read a short statement about the Ilmarshel scheme before I introduce the report. So following discussions at the pre-meet, it was agreed that there wouldn't be any exemptions to the scheme as advertised. Therefore, the references in paragraph 11.2 should raise as follows. Having considered the response from the public and other consultees, it is recommended that the 20 mile an hour scheme in Ilmarshel be implemented as advertised. As unbalanced, the benefits of the scheme in terms of safety and sustainability are considered to outweigh the concerns raised. So now I'll move on to the specifics of the report. So this scheme, the Ilmarshel scheme, was consulted on back in April 2024. And I wanted to highlight that because we had 11 responses to this consultation, six objections, five support. And I know that in this committee, we're always talking about trying to get as many responses as possible, reach out to people that are seldom heard. And I didn't want you guys to think that that work had not been done, this was a very, this was almost the catalyst for that work being started. So the consultation was carried out some time ago. As you know, I've mentioned in meetings before, we're doing a lot of work with counter-context specifically about how to penetrate into some of the communities that are harder to reach, don't often embrace any of our consultation material. So I wanted to reassure you that that work is being done and it hasn't just come to 11 responses. The scheme has been sat for that long because we've struggled to get an agreement from local members about what the scheme should look like. Some of the introduction that I was going to give to that has kind of been taken away by the statement I've just read. So we were going to propose the entirety of Peter Street to be included and the local members wanted less than that to be included, hence the original recommendation to only include part of it. Peter Street is a bit of an anomaly because it's partly housing, partly residential, and at the very end, there's a school and mosque. So we're expecting there's going to be a big walking route from the houses to the mosque and school. And although industrial areas don't necessarily fit within the parameters of these types of schemes, it makes sense that, you know, that entire road is done and obviously the recommendation has been changed as such. The objections were related to Peter Street being included. People don't like the blanket aspect of these schemes, we're starting to find, but I do think there's a good reason for that recommendation to follow on. So I'll move on to Bradway because they're both in the same report. So for Bradway, we received 71 letters of support for the scheme, just 27 objections. So for Bradway, we received 71 letters of support for the scheme, just 27 objections. So that follows the pattern of these schemes still being greatly supported. Originally, we had Queen Victoria Road only partially included in the scheme, just because looking at design-wise, it made sense where the original boundary was, that's where the sort of residential area started. But having the consultation raised that people really wanted the whole of Queen Victoria to be included, we've decided to do that. We've got Amy Design to put forward a few extra measures that we can add to that part of the road to get that included. Also, it's really good to let people know that consultations do matter, we do listen to people, so that's always really, really good. The objections were the usual objections, such as lack of collisions in the area, you know, the cost of the scheme. We do try with our FAQs to prevent some of these objections. I can see a few FAQs I might want to include in my next round of consultation, some fairly new ones about, you know, the lack of collisions and how that fits into our policy, but nothing that we've not seen before. And on the balance, the recommendation is to go ahead with Bradway as advertised with the full extent of Queen Victoria Road included in the scheme. And I will stop talking now. Thank you.
Thank you very much Lisa for presenting that report and the work that you've done to bring this really important safety improvement to the areas that you mentioned. Colleagues, do I see anyone who wishes to make a contribution? councillor Mesro and I think councillor Diamond and then I think councillor Shaw. Should we take them in threes? Is that okay? Councillor Mesro.
Yeah, I'm really supportive of both of these schemes and when I was reading through the objections and comments, it was really great to see all the supportive comments from, for the Bradway scheme, in particular from residents. It was also concerning to read about all the issues caused by speeding drivers and obstructively parked vehicles. And I'd say that this adds even more weight for the need for us to keep progressing schemes that help to address both of these. We know that serious injuries and deaths are directly linked to higher vehicle speeds and plus there are also additional effects like the intimidation of people on foot or wheeling and noise and pollution. So really happy to support both of these. Thank you.
Councillor Diamond.
Yeah, so just really want to thank you for the report. I think it's a really good report and I'm always impressed with the way that you respond to everyone that's got in touch to give feedback. And on the schemes generally, just really pleased to support the schemes as though we'll make these areas safer, especially for most vulnerable road users such as children and young people and will contribute to helping us achieve vision zero, which is our ambition for no road deaths in our city and enable people to feel safe walking, wheeling and cycling to their destinations. And I'm really pleased that the whole of Peter Street will be included for the reasons I've just said. And I think it'll be much clearer for residents and drivers, make for a safer and more pleasant walking route for those travelling to the school and the mosque. And similarly, great that Queen Victoria Street is included in the Bradway scheme as well. So yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you very much councillor Diamond. I'll just go to councillor Shaw and then I'll go to, back to Lisa and I think also councillor Gamble Pew as well as indicate that he'd like to make contribution. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Lisa for the report. I mean, I too, I'm broadly supportive of both these schemes. Just wanted to quickly comment on being the report where it's talking about 20 mile lane in the Bradway scheme and people have been asking for it to be included. In paragraph 4.8.9 in the report, it talks about 20 mile lane being a C-class road and a rural road. I mean, it's not how I would characterise 20 mile lane because, I mean, the stretches of it where there aren't any houses on one side is because there's a railway line on the other side of the wall. And even though, yeah, and there's houses on the other side, even though they have, you know, some of them have trees in front of them, you know, that's still a residential road. And I think it's important that, you know, that all roads aren't necessarily just like ruled out based on their classification, but more, you know, but kind of each on, you know, each on their own merits and, you know, the conditions on their roads. You know, 20 mile lane, it's very steep, it's very windy, there's, you know, lots of blind bends. So, you know, there's lots of places where, you know, residents, you know, might be, you know, crossing the road and stuff. And so I think it's just important that, you know, we take, you know, take those roads on their merits rather than kind of a blanket classification approach. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Shaw. I'll just go to Lisa for any reflections that you might have on any of those points or questions.
Yeah, thank you. So first of all, councillor Mesro, you're right, it's always funny when you're reading the objections and support, some people perceive the speed to be really high and, you know, the scheme won't do much to counteract the high speeds and other people say the speed to be really low, so the scheme's really pointless. So it's trying to get that balance and message to people. And councillor Diamond put correctly in what he said about vision zero and making it just feel like a nicer area to walk around. I think trying to get that message out to people that, you know, people are, it's such a waste of money, you know, there's no evidence. And I think just the sort of feeling of being in one of these zones and feeling that your kids can, you know, walk to school and traffic is going to be, and, you know, we are doing some after-speed surveys and the early indication is really good that the speeds are low and even though they were generally fairly low anyway because they are residential areas, they are reduced in. And I think we need to probably, I mean, in consultation and documents, it's always difficult because you've got a piece of paper, but there must be other ways that we can drive that sort of behavioural change out to people because councillor Diamond put it brilliantly. So, you know, it's definitely the message we need to try and get out to people that it's not just about the number on the odometer, it's about how people feel living in these zones. So thank you for that. And 20 mile lane, so yeah, it's definitely a strange one. So it's a C-class road which in our current agreed policy, A and B are out, C is judged on its own merit. So it did fit just outside this particular zone. And when people were asking whether it could be included or not, I had a look at the sort of features of the road and yeah, you're probably right, rural is probably not the correct descriptor of that road. I did, I'm not familiar with that area as a non Sheffield person, I had a quick look, quick Google, as you can imagine, and there were areas that looked fairly rural to me. But you're probably right that we should judge it on its own merit and if the committee would like me to do some speed surveys, do some extra investigation, see if 20 mile lane can be made into a sign only 20, I can absolutely do that, you know, I've done this in the past. I think the only caution that I will kind of give to that is, obviously we're getting a lot of objections for almost going too far with some of these things and distributor roads do get a lot of sort of objections behind them. So it's kind of that balance of we don't want to lose the people that are currently supporting it, really happy about the scheme, but we also want to make as many roads as possible. But if you want me to go ahead and kind of explore that, I certainly can do that.
And councillor Shaw, I'd also ask councillor Shaw to reflect on whether this is something perhaps that he might want to raise in knowledge briefing and outside this place as well, because that's where we can go into much more detail about the specific measures and he raises an important point.
Thank you Chair. So for clarity, I'm not suggesting that we amend this present scheme.
Oh yeah.
That's before us today. I think if there is any, you know, discussion on 20 mile lane or other roads, we should consult with local members and get their views before we, you know, I don't want to propose something today that, you know, that local members don't want, for instance.
Thank you very much councillor Shaw. Councillor Diamond, was that a clarification on a point that you made previously? Or would you, or is it okay to go to councillor Gamble Pew? Councillor Gamble Pew.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, thank you for bringing this scheme. It's always good to see us making efforts to roll out our 20 mile an hour residential schemes across the city, something that I think we all support here in the chamber and across the elected members in the council. I don't know if anybody has ever heard me say before that I'm a big advocate of looking where we can to delegate the consideration of the detail of the schemes out to local ward members and the LAX or to officers. And our job as a policy committee should be to set the strategic direction and the policy. This is actually sounding familiar, I've got deja vu, maybe I've mentioned it at every meeting of this committee for the past four years, I don't know. And I think one of the concerns that we've had when we've raised that point again and again and again, has been that in offering an opportunity for the people with the local expertise to shape the implementation of the scheme, what we're not offering is an opportunity to veto the rollout of 20 mile an hour zones and to water it down. So whilst I absolutely respect the views and the local knowledge of the ward members in this, in the scheme for the Ilmarshell and Peter Street scheme, I think it's absolutely right that we've amended the recommendations to go back to the original plan to implement it across the whole of Peter Street. And I know Peter Street, I used to live on Ilmarshell Road for 15 years and it's an absolute nightmare. It's a really, really horrible street and as much as the areas around it feel very residential, there are a lot of, there is a lot of residential on that street and there's also the need to make it a safe and comfortable place for people to walk through to get from one set of housing to another. But I thought it was a really good case in point that illustrates the need to balance our role as a policy committee in setting the direction that this is a strategic priority for us as a council and a city and show us the limits of that local decision-making and input. But I still would like to return to the, to emphasise the point, but it'd be really great if we could get to the point where these local schemes and the detail of them doesn't need to come to us because there are other places within our governance that it would sit more effectively. And I may well say it again in the future.
And please, and please do, as councillor Shaw says, councillor Sangre, if he was with us now, he's not on this committee, would no doubt make a similar point. And I always do, when this issue is raised, flag up the fact that actually we do have, of course, that's a positive news, governance committee is looking at the scheme of delegation when it comes to issues like traffic regulation orders. I hope they're very cognisant of those issues that councillor Gamble Pew makes about local members and their need to be consulted, of course, whilst also not delaying what our strategic city-wide priorities that are outlined in our transport vision. But I think those points are very well made. I'll just go to councillor Diamond as well and then I'll see whether Lisa has any final reflections.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, just reflecting on the points that councillor Shaw was making, I'm very sympathetic to what he said there. I'm just going to point out that the 20, we, review of the 20 mile an hour policy is something that's on our work programme. So I think we'll have the opportunity to see, to look at how we deal with similar C-class roads or dealing with them on a case-by-case basis. So thanks.
Thank you very much for those supporting points and of course, yes, our work programme does talk about that, the review of the 20 mile an hour policy. So I guess we have to read this in line with what we're going to be doing later as well, which might have some tweaks with regards to our 20 mile an hour policy. Lisa, I don't see any other colleagues who wish to make a contribution. Is there any other kind of final reflections that you'd like to make? You don't have to, but because you presented this so well.
No, just following on from what councillor Diamond said, yeah, we're expecting the updated policy to be with you very soon, which hopefully, as you say, will give a little bit more clarity because it is very, you know, ambiguous, let's say, our current policy about C-class roads. And it does often lead to objections and, you know, sometimes if you, speed limit and speed survey road is a snapshot of time, so it might not be the actual nature of the road that you're surveying, but you've got to make a decision on the data that you've got. So I've not seen a copy of the policy, but hopefully it will give a little bit more clarity for me who's delivering the schemes currently to make an informed decision. But I will put 20 mile on a future knowledge briefing so we can discuss it in more detail.
Thank you very much Lisa and colleagues for the really informed discussion and debate that we've just had with regards to that particular item. So the report that Lisa has put together contains recommendations for our approval or consideration, they're on page 37 of our agenda pack. Colleagues, are we all in agreement now? If you do wish to dissent, please do raise your hand. I've seen no dissent, I'm seeing nods from colleagues, I think, so therefore we're happy to approve this. So we'll therefore note it as something that we've approved. So colleagues, thank you very much for approving that particular item and its recommendations about the Bradwell and Ilmarshell 20 mile an hour scheme. And thank you Lisa for the hard work and bringing it to us today. Item nine is the next item for our consideration. It is on page 117 of your agenda pack and I think the presenting officer is probably Paul Sullivan, Paul who has a new haircut, which looks very nice, and perhaps also supported by John Shortland as well. Over to you Paul and John.
Thank you Chair. I think it's about the third time you've mentioned my haircut in the last couple of weeks.
Very nice haircut as well.
Okay, I'll try and keep it short now. So yeah, in front of you, you should have the report on the comments and objections to the Nether Edge scheme's traffic regulation order. It's worth pointing out that that report, sorry, the traffic regulation order covers the entire scheme from the city centre out to Wistonham Road, though obviously at the earlier knowledge briefing, we have agreed that the scheme will be phased and phase one will commence next year and phase two to follow on beyond that. But it was felt that we should bring the traffic regulation order forward for all of the scheme, just purely to keep things on track. It also means that, as we get into my little presentation, we'll note that most of the objections have come from the phase two area, so it gives us an opportunity to sort of discuss them a little more detail and we are looking at some of the issues there to try and resolve some of the objections that were raised. So a bit on the background of the scheme, it's a walking, wheeling and cycling scheme that will eventually link Nether Edge through to the city centre and join up with the city centre scheme which is currently under construction. Goes down Charter Row, over the Ring Road, Cemetery Road and currently ends just beyond the parade of shops of Wistonham Road, the junction we've prior replaced. It's an area of high car dependency, it's over and above the city average, but it's also an area of high cycle use compared to the rest of the city. The TRO will support a series of interventions to help encourage walking, wheeling and cycling in the area and from the area. Numerous interventions such as WL lines, which is parking, which will enable us to widen footways, which also prevents pavement parking, one-way schemes, filters to take out traffic. We sent out close to 7,000 letters at the beginning of May, the consultation period took about three weeks, it ran from the first of May to about the 21st, 22nd of May. So 7,000 letters were posted out. Obviously, we put up street notices and advertised in the press. We received 20 comments back. Of those 20 comments, there were 14 objections, one of which was resolved with some email correspondence, which left us with 13 objections. Those objections varied from obviously loss of parking through to filtering out traffic and putting traffic on already busy roads. And then there were one or two objections around lost trees and the subway. The subway will be subject to a stopping up order which will allow further consultation in the new year. The hotspots in terms of the objections were really around Cemetery Road, again, in phase two of the scheme. We've been in discussion with the churches to understand their issues. I've also met with the Leaverton Gardens Tara to understand how the parking works in the area for them and their residents. So we are working on some solutions. The TRO will enable us to investigate those and come up with a solution. We are intending to install additional blueback. We are intending to install additional blue badge parking in the area, which was the main concern from, from the three churches, and we are looking at options for parking at the top of Cemetery Road for weekends and evenings, which is what it currently stands at. But we will need to widen the footway, so there may have to be a compromise with, with traffic there. There's also some issues raised around Pomona Street about the lack of parking opportunity in that area and Sunderland Street for some of the businesses. The school streets changes should increase parking in that area to around, to install an additional 12 pay and display car parking spaces. And then probably the biggest concern has come from the three of the businesses on the parade of shops, the parade of businesses on, at Wiston Home Road. We're not intending to make any changes to the bay that sits out the front of those businesses, which serves them. In fact, we're going to increase the opportunity by one bay as part of this traffic regulation order. But what their concern is that if we reduce car parking elsewhere, it will impact on that two-hour bay, and people will abuse it as one or two do now. They also, they need the two-hour bay, the laundrette there obviously needs a quick turnover, 15, 20 minutes, the chiropractor needs patients to be able to park for about an hour or so, and the barbers similarly. So we've, we have met those businesses and we have come up with some solutions which we've just started to look at. The TRO also gives us an opportunity to tidy up some of the existing restrictions that are currently out of the network, where the current order doesn't match what's on the ground or vice versa. So for example, the bus lane on Charter Row doesn't quite have the correct traffic regulation order alongside it, so we will be taking steps to tidy that up and some of the other existing restrictions that are dotted around the scheme. So all in all, quite a low level of response from 7,000 letters mailed out. There were five letters of support. The scheme doesn't work unless we progress the traffic regulation order, so therefore I would like to consider those objections, and we recommend that the traffic regulation is authorised, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Paul. Colleagues, do I see any questions, points of classifications, or I guess statements from colleagues? See councillor Shaw, councillor Merzow, and then councillor Horner. I'll go in round to three if that's okay. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. Just a, just a question for now. Just in the, in the report, in the objections, it doesn't seem to include responses from, from officers to each objection. In the reports for the, for the 20 mile an hour schemes that we've just passed, the officer responses were included for each objection, so I just wanted to check whether that was, yeah, an omission or intentional or something else.
Thank you very much. I'll just go to, I think councillor Merzow and then councillor Horner. Councillor Merzow.
Yes, I just wanted a bit of clarification on what's happening on South Lane. Is it just going to be for deliveries only? There's some changes, I think, there. That was my question. I've got a statement, but I'll make that later.
Thank you very much, and we'll come back to you as well for that, councillor Merzow. Councillor Horner.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that report, and I think it's important. I'm pleased to hear about the consultations you're having with people, with businesses, et cetera, because I think what often causes us a problem is when somebody lives in a place, it can be quite obvious to them that actually, well, actually, if you just did that there and that there, and we often don't appear to do that. So I'm very pleased that you're consulting with people, I think it's really important you continue to do that, and it sounds like there's some flexibility here, that we should be able to resolve a number of these problems, the churches, for instance, and, you know, because I say, I do think that's what causes a problem sometimes. Something's done, and people feel something's been plonked on them, and when you live in a place, you think, well, I wouldn't have put that there, I'd have put it over there, whatever it might be. So, you know, I would encourage you to carry on with this, listening to people and talking to people, and it sounds like you're making a reasonable job so far of trying to meet those objections. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just go to Paul for any reflections, and then I'll go to councillor Diamond and councillor Merzow, I think as well. Paul.
That's an omission, councillor Shaw, on the responses, I think we have responded to everybody, but I can circulate those to go with the papers post this meeting. I'll have to get back to you on South Lane, because I'm not, I don't know the exact detail of every single dimension that we're proposing. I suspect, given the location, it's just a tidying up of what's there, but I will, I'll confirm and get back to you.
Superb, thank you. I'll go to councillor Diamond.
Yeah, thank you very much for the report. I just wanted to, because you were talking about in your presentation, abuse of sort of restricted parking already, so I just, in terms of like the times people might be staying. So I just wanted to ensure, have some reassurance that we're working really closely with parking services to make sure that it's going to be really robust in terms of enforcement, and that we actually will be able to enforce all of the restrictions, because otherwise we're not, the scheme is not going to be as promised.
Before we go to Paul for any responses and reflections, do I see any other colleague who wishes to ask a question? I don't. Paul.
Yes, so the bay that sits outside the Wiston Home shops is two hours, no return within two hours, and it is, according to the business owners, it is mostly adhered to, but every now and again, they do get a vehicle that's parked there for a longer, sometimes overnight. It's very difficult for enforcement to monitor, because there's no way of proving what time that vehicle arrived and what time it left, et cetera, et cetera. So once we've discussed solutions with the three businesses, they've come, between us we've come up with something. I'm now sort of in discussion with parking, and I need to bring John into the equation at some point as well, to look at our parking policy and see whether that solution fits with what we'd like to do, but there are probably other alternatives as well, so.
Paul, am I right in saying that in some areas they use parking discs as well for kind of helping people, helping parking services to understand how long people have been there? People put a disc on their vehicle and then they specify the time that they arrived, and that's easy to check for the parking services, the civil enforcement officers?
I don't think we have disc parking anywhere in Sheffield, or not that I'm aware of. I mean, it's obviously quite a prominent place like we're being on the coast. I don't think it's something that's on our agenda at the moment. To let you all know, the solution that we discussed with the businesses was a pay and display machine that doesn't charge, so you have to get a ticket, and it will give you the two hours, so then civil enforcement officers can then check that ticket. So it's similar to a disc. It does rely on the driver slash passenger getting a ticket, but it does mean it's a lot easier for the enforcement officer. We don't do that in the city at the moment, and it is a bit of a, could be a bit of a precedent, unless we come up with some really strict criteria. But like I said, I'm in discussion with both our strategy manager and parking about options for that, that location. Their concern is obviously that if we remove parking from Wiston Home, it will be abused more than it currently is. They can live with the current abuse, but they can't, they don't, they can't take any more.
Thank you very much, councillor Diamond.
Yeah, I'll say that more widely, we just need to make sure that the parking restrictions were robust throughout the scheme to prevent people parking on the pavement or cycle track.
Yeah, just to reassure you, councillor, I have regular monthly meetings with parking colleagues now to address just these issues as they come up and make sure schemes are legislation-proof.
And that's really good to see, isn't it? You know, John's talked about how City Transport is working with, you know, our parking services colleagues in order to make sure that there's real joint working there, so if there's a change on the street, that that is enforceable as well. And I think that's, you know, a real change for the organisation as well, working together, not in silos, on delivering the basics for residents. Councillor, not councillor Campbell-Pugh, I don't see any other colleague who wishes to make a question, ask a question. I do, councillor Shaw. Okay, then I will therefore go to councillor Merzow and councillor Shaw.
Thank you. Yeah, my comment is I'd really like to see the scheme completed. It's a really welcome scheme, I'd really like to welcome the opportunity for people to walk and wheel more safely, as well as all the improvements that it will make to public health and air quality from enabling people to choose to walk, wheel and cycle. And the need for the scheme is illustrated really well by a conversation that I had with somebody only last week, who told me that he worries every day because his husband cycles to work from Nether Edge to the university, and he's terrified that he'll be killed or injured during that journey. So I'd really welcome this scheme going forward.
Thank you very much, councillor Merzow. Councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, like councillor Merzow, yeah, I welcome the scheme, I think it's a very important, you know, scheme to improve the links for, you know, walking, cycling, wheeling from Nether Edge to the city centre and forms part of that kind of that wider vision for making, making Sheffield like more, more accessible and more, more walking friendly, cycling friendly for everyone. Yeah, I've, my experience of cycling in, in that area is a bit more limited than others, but, I mean, by my experience, I think these interventions are, would certainly be an improvement on the status quo. And I noted the, you know, the concerns from, from businesses and residents, yeah, about outlots of parking and impact on businesses, and like councillor Horner, I welcome the, you know, the consultation and those, you know, those discussions and stuff that you're having with people to, you know, to reassure them and, you know, take account of those concerns, because I think that's, you know, really important, that we aren't seen to be doing things to communities or to people, but, you know, doing things with, you know, local people and businesses and making sure that everyone has, has a say. Thank you.
Councillor Diamond.
Yeah, so again, really welcome the report and happy to support the TRO, which will enable schemes to move to delivery. It's a shame that we have to deliver in phases due to the constraints of funding timescales, but I appreciate that. There's so many reasons why the scheme and others like this are really important. It's really about empowering local residents to have choice and agency about how they travel and being safe while choosing to wheel or cycle or walk. And segregated routes enable even the most vulnerable residents to wheel or cycle to their destination, and that they won't come into conflict with motor vehicles and risk a collision. The benefits of giving people this choice and agency are loads, from increasing rates of activity, leading to better public health, more independence for young people, greater accessibility, cleaner air, less emissions, less congestions, congestion, because fewer people will be driving and safer streets. According to a report, in 2024, the cost of congestion to Sheffield was 133 million per year. So, yeah, only by giving people this choice will we be able to get these benefits. And I think some of the comments reference that there's no evidence that better cycling infrastructure will increase use, but you don't need to look to the Netherlands, Scandinavia or Paris or London to see that that's not true, because you can look to Sheffield and the Sheep Valley route in Sheffield, which has seen 70% increase in cycling, cyclists using that route, so, yeah, I think really welcome this, and thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you very much, councillor Diamond, and it's almost as if councillor Diamond is reading my screen, because I was going to say something that was very similar, because I very much welcome this improvement. I think, as colleagues have said, on a cost-party basis, it gives people much more choice about how they travel. I guess it's an example, isn't it, of us delivering on our transport vision, improving footways to make them much safer for people, improving cycle provision to encourage healthy lifestyles, and in doing so, to help us tackle congestion, which we know, as councillor Diamond has said, costs our economy millions in lost productivity. So thank you very much, Paul and John, for bringing this item to us today. Colleagues, the recommendations for approval and your consideration are on page 119 of your agenda pack. To ask whether you are all agreed, and if you wish to dissent, then please do raise your hand. Colleagues, are we, are we happy to approve this particular item and these recommendations? I can see colleagues nodding, and there's no hands up to raise their dissent, so therefore we've approved that item on page 117 onwards of the agenda pack, which is the Transforming Cities Fund Nether Edge Wedge. Thank you very much, colleagues, very much appreciate it. That then takes us to the final substantive item on our agenda today, which is item 10, it's our Year Ahead Report. Now, it's on page 183 of our agenda pack. Our presenting officer is going to be Sean McLean. Normally, Will Stewart would join Sean, but he's not able to be here today, he's helping to represent Sheffield in London at a really important gathering of decision-makers to push for better connectivity between Leeds and Sheffield. It's something that we're working on with Leeds City Council alongside West Yorkshire Mail Combined Authority and South Yorkshire Mail Combined Authority. So Sean is going to very quickly run us through this, and I've invited colleagues to perhaps consider spotlighting something that you're happy that this administration is bringing forward. This is a three-party administration that we've got today, and every member of this committee is part of that administration as well. And also to remind people that once we've got this Year Ahead Report on item 10, on page 180 of our agenda pack, it should also be read alongside our Forward Work Programme, which is subject to other discussions that we all have as members of this committee. So Sean, I'll hand over to you. Sean, of course, is our Director of Regeneration and Development, and I've also, Amanda, said that I've got to remind colleagues to please note an amended version of the report, which was published as a supplement to correct some minor errors in the paper, which were just administrative. Sean.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so the Year Ahead Report outlines the progress made in 24/25 and sets the forward agenda for 25/26 for this policy committee in delivering the council plan outcomes focusing on regeneration, development, climate action and transport. It emphasises collaboration, strategic planning and engagement to achieve those long-term city goals. The city goals and the council plan provide clear direction for growth and prosperity, and strategic foundations have been established through this committee and key strategies approved, which include the transport vision, the growth plan and the housing growth delivery plan that were all signed off last year. Some of the significant progress and achievements we've seen in 24/25 and completed projects include 368 new homes at West Bar, Greater Green on Angel Street, Neeps End to Kellam City Centre Active Travel Route, and over eight million invested in local transport schemes, and 21 million secured for housing growth, supporting over 350 homes are just some of the key achievements last year. In terms of regeneration and development progress, we've seen the completion of the heart of the city development phase, progress on Attcliff Waterside and securing funds for major city centre developments. We've also seen updates on key projects at Attcliff, Castle Gate and Parkwood, and significant new progress around processes for delivery schemes. In terms of transport and climate initiatives, we've seen adoption of the Sheffield Transport Vision, aiming for a low carb and a low carbon network, green parking permit review, clean air zone benefits and development of a local area energy plan, supporting decarbonisation and resilient energy solutions. The committee has also maintained prudent financial management with a balanced budget, focusing on efficient service delivery, securing external funding and empowering staff to meet the city needs. In terms of key focus areas for 25/26, priorities include camera enforcement for moving traffic offences, station campus development, Transforming Cities Fund projects, more 20 mile an hour schemes and advancing the local area energy plan. Regeneration project updates that will come forward will be around the housing catalyst sites, further work at Parkwood, how heart, performance around heart of the city, announcement of preferred developers for Furnis Hill and Neeps End catalyst sites and adoption of the Attcliff area regeneration framework. This committee also supports council-wide priorities through cross-committee collaboration around building regulations, compliance, sustainable retrofit projects, transport around building regulations, compliance, sustainable retrofit projects, transport modelling, flood risk reduction and leveraging funding for neighbourhoods and housing growth. And as the Chair said, the Year Ahead Report should also be read in conjunction with our work programme that again has had a significant update this month and will continue to be updated to show progress of how we will deliver the Year Ahead Programme. The recommendations are set out to note the progress made in 2425, recognising the work of members, officers and partners to establish the strong strategic foundations for the organisation and the committee's role in delivering these. Consider the variation of the key issues identified in section three of the report as part of our forward agenda for municipal year 2526 and agree to work in collaboration with other policy committees to ensure the opportunities and issues identified as council plan priorities are taken forward this year. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Sean for putting that report together with Will Stewart as well and for running us through it. Colleagues, do I see any member who wishes to make a contribution? Councillor Shaw first, councillor Shaw.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, you invited us earlier to make comments about things that we are particularly proud about. I mean, it's absolutely no surprise to anyone that I'm particularly proud of the fact we at least delivered part of the Sheaf Valley cycle route scheme, even though it is several years kind of behind schedule. And, you know, we need to make sure that these schemes that we put forward and we talk about, you know, in these types of reports and things are actually delivered and do, you know, our absolute best to make sure they are delivered, you know, on time and on budget. The report talks about the decarbonisation plans. Again, very important piece of work, but I mean, the city is not on track for meeting our, you know, our targets by 2030. And, you know, if you forgive the pun, we can't take our foot off the gas in order to make sure we actually, you know, hit those targets, you know, and, you know, help to safeguard, you know, our futures and that, you know, of future generations. So, yeah, so we've done, you know, some very impressive stuff over the last year, but we can't afford to be complacent in the least. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Shaw for your reflections there. Do I see any other colleague who wishes to make a contribution? Councillor Mesro.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there are so many positive things coming in the year ahead. It's really great to see and I'm really looking forward to the progression of all the connecting Sheffield schemes as well as all the other items that will make Sheffield a more pedestrian-friendly city and as well as safer for people, healthier, more inclusive, more accessible and greener. As City Ward Council, I'm particularly happy to see the progression of the Neeps End City Centre connecting Sheffield scheme, which will improve walking, wheeling and cycling from Kellam and Neeps End to the city centre as well as adding much-needed greenery because Sheffield city centre is particularly short of that. And I'm really looking forward to the citywide signage scheme, which will help residents and visitors to be able to enjoy getting around the city more easily as well as finding and exploring new places to visit. I'll leave it at that. I'm sure there's lots of other things that people want to say, so I'll finish there.
Thank you councillor Mesro. Councillor Horner.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, we made progress on a number of things. I particularly welcome camera enforcement and moving traffic offences because the fact is the vast majority of drivers in this city do obey the rules, but they're badly affected by people who don't. And the danger to motorists, to pedestrians, to everybody, for people who make illegal manoeuvres on the road is really, is really important. So I'm pleased we've been doing that. In terms of our air quality, I mean, I'm pleased to hear that the reason one of our officer colleagues isn't here is because they're in Leeds having a discussion about improving links between Leeds and Sheffield. And I know that, pleased to see that there's going to be a fast service from Leeds to Sheffield by rail at the end of December, which will only have one stop, so it'll be much faster. The tragedy however is that we are improving the air quality in the centre, but one of the biggest sources of poor air quality now is idling diesel engines in Sheffield Midland Station. And I'm sad that we cannot get to a point where we get electric wires up in Sheffield. And I frankly, I agree with the mayor and I don't say that often, when he said, I, you know, I know everybody shares the frustration about the pausing, indeed the abandonment of the Midland Mainline electrification. I cannot see why it can't start from this end rather than it has to come towards from the south. I also can't see why, given the huge Transpennine route upgrade, why after that electrification from Leeds to Sheffield can't happen. If we could remove those diesel trains, we would remove an awful lot of our poor air quality around that area. And I know as we're going to head to the station campus, well, all those people are going to have the pleasure if they open their windows, are breathing in diesel fumes if we're not careful.
Thank you very much councillor Horner as well also for beating the drum for the electrification of the Midland Mainline, which I think we all agree with. Councillor Diamond.
Yeah, thank you very much for the report. Yeah, I think we've spoken quite a lot about our achievements that we've done this year. I'd also like to add to that the rollout of some citywide cycle storage, which we've been really pushing and achieving in Cleedus Valley. And it's going to be more delivered this year as well. That's a really positive sign. Positive thing that enables people to safely secure their bicycle, especially if they live in residential streets with limited, like terraced housing, nowhere to store their bikes. So that's really important. But looking forward, I think in terms of the region, I'm really excited to see Sheffield Castle progressing. That's going to be a really great inner city, green space and event space. And also the connections to that as well in terms of the travel connections to allow people to get there easily. Also excited to see how the local area energy plan progresses because that's hopefully going to allow us to reduce our emissions and move closer to net zero and also bring down bills for people in Sheffield. But in terms of transport policy, there's lots of good things going on. I think we've done some great work around the movement and access plan. It's obviously a plan for the future, but some really good cross-party work on that. I think the A625 scheme is going to be really important as well for reducing danger on Exeter Road. And personal one for me, the parking policy one. Probably a bit geeky, but they get, and the e-bike scheme as well.
And thank you. And I think it's probably important to note, isn't it? The work that councillor Diamond has done on that joint task and finish group, cross-committee on parking as well. And we're all very grateful for that. Do I see any other colleagues who wish to make a contribution? Councillor Campbell Pugh.
Thanks Chair. There's so much exciting stuff going on in the city at the minute, as you can see through the summary in this year plan. And such is the level of my excitement. I was reluctant to speak because when I get too excited, my level of coherence reduces to a critical level. However, I'll take a risk. The thing that came to my mind, a couple of years ago, I was doing a street surgery on my own street in Ecklesfield and knocked on the door of this one person who had had a political leaflet, can't imagine who it could have been from, through their door, saying that the city centre was crumbling in ruins, mainly featured a couple of battered old shipping containers and was full of substance abusers kind of threatening to beat people up. Such was their level of distress at this image that they'd had, that they were actually in tears on the doorstep saying like Sheffield is ruined and it's awful. I'm never going to go to the city centre ever again. What I'd say to people like that is it's time to take another look at Sheffield and time to take another look at the city centre. Time to take another think about preconceptions people have about ideas that you can't get anywhere. It's not possible to go by bike in our city because of the topography. Have another look, have a fresh look. Things are really happening from the Attcliff development with all that sustainable net zero housing, right the way through to the city centre. The amount of infrastructure we're putting in that is enabling people to have those choices about whether you need to get in your car or whether you can find another way of getting about. Have the benefits in themselves, but they also have the benefit of, they really kind of upgrade the physical environment of the city. They just make it look so much better. And although there's, it might be a little bit of grumbling from people about the roadworks and the building works whilst things are done. Actually, what we're starting to see is the scaffolding coming down. The heart of the city is just incredible. I'm going to just have to stop because I'm going to just burst with excitement. But I just think it's really great and it's good to see it happening and I think there's more to come. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much councillor Campbell Pugh. I don't see any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution. Sean's team as Director of Regeneration and Development is of course responsible for providing that kind of knowledge base and driving forward many of those projects. So we'll certainly relish those comments and the feedback for his team. Sean, I'll just give you a final opportunity for any reflections that you might well have. And thank you for bringing the report today.
No, thank you and thank you for the committee's comments on some of the really good work we've done. And I think it reflects across my area, across Will Stewart's area around transport as well and the many staff that work together to deliver those projects. And I think, as people have said, it does take time and we appreciate sometimes that's frustrating to people. But I think the point about encouraging people to come and see what we've done and visit it for themselves is what we need to do. And I think, well, like I said, there's more exciting projects coming forward that have been mentioned in the year ahead. So thank you for the committee's work and for the comments. And I think in line with one of our values, it just shows that together we do get things done, don't we, across this committee? So thank you.
And thank you. Thank you very much Sean and thank you for highlighting that together we do get things done. And that therefore takes us to the end of that particular item now. The recommendations for approval are on page two of the supplementary pack. Are we all agreed? If any member wishes to dissent, then please do raise your hand. I can see that colleagues are content with approving that particular item, the Year Ahead Report. So thank you very much Sean and also Will, who can't be with us today for bringing that particular item. And colleagues, that takes us to the end of our agenda today and concludes the business that we have, has been outlined in our agenda. So thank you very much and I hope you have a great day.